We'll convene the Dubuque County Board of Supervisors, meeting Tuesday, November 12, 2019, 9:00 a.m. I would ask everyone to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Let's step over here. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next item on the agenda is public comments. At this time, anyone may address the board on matters of which are on the agenda. Please go to the podium, state your name and address. Is there anyone to speak in public comments? And again, please, for Mary's purposes, name and address.
I'm Mary Wagner, Tony Wagner. Thank you for your time today. We want to share and bring to your attention today a drainage issue with a pond located at 17646 Humke Road.
West Platte subdivision and North Hill border the pond city. And Haven Ridge would border to the left of this pond with drainage issue. There's a manmade dike to the north end of the pond that is what higher than the elevation of the left. Plate properties, including ours. The pond is fed by Middle Fork Catfish Creek and all the natural drainage from West Platte and from the proposed Haven Ridge. That dike.
So, the issue that we have with the drainage of the pond began last October when this property was parceled off and the current owner took possession of the pond. We've been actively trying to resolve the unnatural encroachment of water onto our property during this time, and we're going to share just a couple pieces of evidence of the impact of this issue.
The pond height is maintained by a spill height that appears to be altered by the current owner based on some photos we have. The current property owner has modified the dike in a way that diverts water onto our property. Currently, we have approximately 3,000 square feet of water, of property underwater due to trespassing and much more property is unmaintained or damaged by the altered water. The depth of the water at its deepwater pond property is approximately 3,000 square feet, covering farm fences. There are no reasons for water on our property prior to this owner taking possession.
Our concern today is mostly the safety of our children as they often play in our yard and/or pass through and with the depth of the water, it's extremely dangerous. Our other concern is also, of course, the damage to our property being that it's 3,000 square feet of our property. But we also want you to know that we are not opposed to a subdivision being put in that property because we live in a subdivision, we enjoy that lifestyle, so that's not a bother to us, but we are very concerned about the increase in the pavement and the rooftops, which is also going to lead to an increase in the amount of water, large or small, will have a very big impact in the height of the pond that is currently on our property. And we are also concerned that the owner is currently unable to maintain the proper drainage and/or maintain the water on his property. And there are also, like Tony said, no easements for water on our property. We've been wishing to resolve this issue for the past year. In that time, we've reached out three times in person and received a hostile response. We've delivered two letters, one regular, one certified, and also received no response. We've reached out to the man who's in here for advice and counsel, and he has also spoken to Eric Schmeckel, and Eric has given a phone call to the property owner and has also seen the property himself. Ultimately, we just want the water to be used on our property, we want the property to be restored, but we are extremely fearful that because the owner is currently unable to maintain the pond, that the new subdivision will compound this issue if the pond is not properly maintained, which it currently is not. So we just wanted to bring this to your attention today and also hope that you could share your perspective.
Okay, thank you. And just for the, so that I can talk about it with my counterparts, which we can't do otherwise, is I did do a site visit to the Wagner's home. It's true, they have at least three foot of water onto their property from this pond. I did ask Eric Schmeckel to be involved. It's a private property issue, but my view of county government is we should still help facilitate solutions. And Eric is in touch with Mr. Stakis, and we're trying to help find solutions to this matter, which would seem, you know, would seem to be fixable. But if not, then, you know, resort to a legal issue, but with the safety concerns and everything. So I feel like it's appropriate for elected officials to be involved and in the loop on it. We certainly don't want anything bad to happen there, and hopefully, we'll be able to find solutions, and if not, it is a, and I have been clear that it's a private, it's a private matter, but again, I don't think we just wash our hands of everything that's private. I think we try to counsel and try to mediate and see if we can help find solutions. So that's bringing you up to date on this. And I did suggest that the Wagner's come in and utilize this because the subdivision is on the agenda for today, so this was the appropriate place for input.
Could you be here for the discussion about that plot? Okay, then we can have discussion.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you. All right, back to public comments. Again, if anyone on any other issue that's on the agenda would like to speak, please approach the podium, state your name and address. Okay, seeing none, we'll move on. We do have, under Agenda Item Number One, Proclamations, and I have a proclamation to read, and we do have, we have Yvonne Knoll, excuse me, Levon Knoll, the Executive Director of Hospice here, and this is proclamation is National Hospice Month, November 2019. I'll read the proclamation. Whereas Hospice of Dubuque is your local nonprofit hospice serving the tri-state area's terminally ill and their loved ones for over 36 years, and whereas Hospice is about life, the comfort and quality of life, and whereas Hospice care is individualized and provided by a team of healthcare professionals delivering comprehensive care centered on patient goals, and whereas Hospice is a service that comes to you in the place you call home, and whereas Hospice is for the entire family now and later, and whereas Hospice of Dubuque is your hometown hospice since 1983. Now therefore, the Dubuque County Board of Supervisors do hereby proclaim the month of November 2019 as National Hospice Month and urges all citizens to recognize Hospice of Dubuque and the exceptional services they provide to our terminally ill. Adopted November 12, 2019, Dubuque County Board of Supervisors. And is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the proclamation.
And I will second that.
Motion made and seconded to approve the proclamation. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, Levon, would you like to make some comments? Thank you.
Well, first of all, this isn't part of my comments, but yesterday was Veterans Day, as we're all aware, and I just want to make the citizens of the county aware that Hospice of Dubuque has a program called We Honor Veterans, and through that program, we try to meet the unique needs of veterans at the end of life. We try to honor their service and sacrifices that they made, so I thought it was an opportune time to mention that and also to thank all our veterans. So as stated, I'm Levon Knoll, I'm the Executive Director for Hospice of Dubuque, and I want to thank the Dubuque County Board of Supervisors for taking the time this morning to proclaim November as National Hospice Month. No one likes to think about that last chapter of life, and yet it's something everyone will face eventually. One of the most frequent comments we hear is, why didn't we call Hospice of Dubuque sooner? So this proclamation provides an opportunity to raise awareness regarding the benefits of hospice care, so people know where to turn for help when they are facing life-limiting illness. Our care team provides expert medical care that helps patients manage the symptoms, their symptoms, and enjoy time with their loved ones. The care team also answers questions, offers guidance and support, and we help caregivers function in their role as the primary caregiver. We also provide emotional spiritual support for both the patient and their family. The goals of hospice care are quality of life in the final chapter of life and comfort and dignity until natural death. This year, we're using National Hospice Month to remind the community that Hospice of Dubuque is a community resource, and we've been here since 1983, and we are here to help when individuals and families are facing issues related to hospice care. Throughout all of Dubuque, from Dubuque to Dyersville to Cascade and all the towns in between, Hospice of Dubuque is the hometown hospice, and we are always here for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Levon. All right. Want to get a picture?
Sure. Should be all right. The land's be of us and...
Yvonne, you want to come on around?
Our flags are moved a little bit, but that's probably fine, right?
Gosh, I feel like I'm...
You're at the high states now.
I am. Thank you very much.
I have to stand by the tall, skinny guy.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for your service. Appreciate it.
Thank you so much. Thank you very much.
So I got the wheels turned to see if I can come up with a suitable location.
Oh, okay.
All right. Hey, it came back up. Next item on the agenda, item number two, approval of minutes of meeting of October 28th, November 5th, 2019.
I'm good. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded to approve the minutes as presented. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, carried three to zero. All right, next up is item three, consent items. I don't know that we have any, so we'll go to item number four, procurement procedures. We have a reference here to the Sheriff's Storage Building, previous specifications lacked a component, motion, it would be in order to reject the previous bids.
To recommendation of the sheriff.
Sheriff Kennedy, any comments?
But... I don't have...
Okay.
Based upon the recommendation of the sheriff, I'll make a motion to reject the bids previously received.
And I will second that.
Okay, motion made and seconded to reject the bids. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, carried three, zero. All right, we're in item number five, which is public hearings. The, we have a proof of publication for public hearing, which was for today, November 12th. We need, we would be looking for a motion to approve the proof of publication.
So moved.
And I will second that.
Okay. All in favor of approving the proof of publication signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, carried three, zero. All right, item B, under, of public hearings, under number five, public hearing, plans and specifications for the courthouse and old jail fire alarm system. Entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
I will make that motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We have a public hearing open regarding the plans and specifications for the courthouse and old jail fire alarm system. Is Chris here? Would prefer that he...
We could, we're in open public hearing. Keep the public hearing open, move on.
I think he should, I was thinking he would explain that so the public could...
I'd like to have him explain.
Can we track him down?
Be honest.
Thank you.
The public hearing's open. Do we have to do anything?
No.
We just move on to the next agenda item? Okay.
Okay, so can we open another public hearing while that one's open? Okay, all right, we'll go to the next public hearing, which is item C, public hearing, speed limit change on Herod Road, and then we have also a related resolution approving the speed limit change on Herod Lane.
Make a motion to open the public hearing on the speed limit on Herod Road.
And I will second that.
Okay, motion made and seconded to open the public hearing. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, carried three to zero. All right, is there anyone here to speak on the public hearing on Herod Lane speed limit? Okay.
Maybe our county engineer could give a little background.
Anthony, do you have any comment on the Herod Lane issue?
Yeah, Herod Lane is currently a, basically like a subdivision street or road that comes off of Derby Greens Road. There is no speed limit posting out there, which by Iowa code means it's 55 miles per hour during the day, 50 at night. It's, you're hard pressed to do much more than 25, 30 miles per hour out there. It's a pretty tight road, it's got some curvature to it, so this, and actually, all the landowners out there, property owners have signed a petition to propose this to be 25 miles per hour, and I am in support of that.
Okay, and this is more of a subdivision-type setting, it's a dead-end residential, and in most of our subdivisions, or all of them, 25 is the...
Yep, that's correct.
...speed limit, so, okay, is there anyone to speak on the Herod Lane issue?
I will make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to close the public hearing. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 I'll make a motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded to approve the resolution for the approving the speed limit change on Herod Lane. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, carried three to zero. All right, we have a public hearing open for the courthouse and old jail fire alarm system. Chris Soder is here. We've asked if anyone present would like to speak in the public hearing, but Chris, we would appreciate you kind of giving us a summary on this.
What we have is current fire alarm systems in the jail and the courthouse are extremely old, outdated, there's no support left for them, the manufacturer doesn't even exist anymore, and we need to be able to bring them up to current code. That's what the plan is. Safety for everybody in the building, in the buildings and everything else.
Chris, we've been, this has been a topic of discussion for some time here, and is this, this is something that you feel needs to move forward and...
Oh, definitely.
Bring us into compliance.
Yeah, we have, like I said, we have zero support for the systems currently in the old jail, and the main, the original manufacturer for the system here in the courthouse, there's no support they can give us other than some spare parts, which is heat detectors and smoke detectors. They can't do anything else for the current panel. There's no parts left for it. It's been, was installed in the early 70s, and it's been unsupportable for probably the last five to seven years.
Is it in our fiscal year budget?
Yes, we had set that up for this fiscal year to do it.
And you're hoping to have it accomplished this year as well?
Yes, my goal would be if we can get everything moving forward, it should be, we'll start after the new year, and it's between roughly 90 days should be the timeframe to get everything completed, because we have to build it parallel to our current system, test it, bring it online, and then completely take out the old system.
I note you also have a pre-bid conference that you're anticipating.
Yes.
So folks have questions about this?
Yes, all the, all the key players hopefully will be here and be able to go through the buildings accordingly.
Any other questions for Chris? Thank you. All right, anyone else to speak on the, on this matter, which is the approving the plan and specification for the courthouse and old jail fire alarm system? Okay, hearing done.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to close the public hearing. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All right.
I have to make a motion to approve the resolution related to the courthouse and old jail fire alarm system.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded to approve the resolution. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, carried three, zero. All right, now we go to item 5D, public hearing, amendment to zoning ordinance. The first is, first case is ZC number 10-27-19, Alan and Neil Wenty, A1 agriculture to A2 agricultural residential. And we'll turn it over to zoning administrator Tammy Henry for some brief comments, and then we'll open the public hearing.
All right, good morning. The applicant's request to rezone from A1 agricultural to A2 agricultural residential, one acre, to allow Neil to remain in the home and retain the five acres for his cattle operation, and that the remaining 35 acres will be sold to Alan's son and continue in agricultural use. The property is located 1.07 miles northeast of the city of Dyersville along Wenty Road and is legally described as the southwest of the southwest, Section 13, T89 North, R2W, New Wine Township, Dubuque County, Iowa. The property is owned by Alan and Neil Wenty. Zoning in the area includes A1 agricultural to the north, the south, the east and the west. There are no special use permits attached to this property, there are no previous rezoning cases attached to this property. Five rezoning notification letters were sent to the property owners and the city of Dyersville was notified. Comprehensive plan, Chapter 9, Agriculture and Natural Resources, page 134, and Objective 3.1 and Chapter 8 Housing, page 122, Objective 12.7 may apply to this case. So what we have, I'll show you here, so what we have is, they're separating around here, and it is to allow them to split this property, the two brothers, with the one brother to maintain living in the other one, and eventually, the son of the other will end up eventually owning the whole thing for farming. So he's going to continue farming and farms other property down the road as well.
Okay, any questions for Tammy? I guess a motion to open the public hearing.
I will make a motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to open the public hearing. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, if there is anyone here to speak on the, on this matter, now would be the time to approach the podium. If you do so, please give your name and address for the record.
That's perfect, yeah.
Is that good there?
Yeah. Dave Schneider, Schneider Land Surveying, 906 First Street, North Farley. Been working with Al and Neil here, trying to, basically, their, their son is looking to buy 35 acres and, might back up, 35 acres, approximately 35 acres off the farm. He just got married this past weekend, and, and they're, I guess, letting him into the operation. Al and his brother Neil are keeping this cattle feeding facility. There's an existing house on that Neil's daughter and husband live in. They own about four farms, I think, or farm about four farms, some that they own, some that their mother still has in her name, and I know there's one to the northeast and one to the west here. But anyway, they're, they're basically just trying to keep the buildings and allow the kid to finance as much as possible, which, once you throw buildings in, it runs up the value. He's trying to, they're trying to use some of the government through the FSA office loan.
Okay, any questions for Dave? Thank you. All right.
Then for me?
Anyone else to speak on this matter?
And Tammy, what was the vote at the zoning meeting?
Oh, I'm sorry, let me...
I think it was unanimous.
I believe it was, I apologize for not having that in front of me. It was, everybody was present, so it was a six, six to, seven to zero. Look at my notes. You don't usually ask me that. I just have to find the minutes.
Six, zero.
The minutes reflected.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, but I didn't want to say it for sure.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that.
Let me double check that. Yeah, six, zero.
Ready to close the public hearing?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to close the public hearing. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 I will make a motion to approve the zoning request.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the zoning request. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, carried three to zero.
And when I find my cheat sheet, I'll make another motion. I will make a motion to suspend the requirement this amendment be considered and voted on for passage at two prior meetings.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded to suspend the requirement that it be voted on for passage at two prior meetings. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, carried three, zero.
I'll make a motion that this amendment be adopted and that the zoning administrator be directed to enter the appropriate changes on the official zoning map and that the auditor be directed to arrange for the publication of the amendment and portion of the official zoning map as amended in the official county newspapers as required by law.
Second.
Motion was made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, carried three to zero.
I'll make a motion that this amendment be adopted and that the zoning administrator be directed to enter the appropriate changes on the official zoning map and that the auditor be directed to arrange for the publication of the amendment and portion of the official zoning map as amended in the official county newspapers as required by law.
Second.
Motion was made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, carried three to zero. It is approved. Okay, next case, public hearing, this is 5E, amendment to zoning ordinance, ZC number 102819, Roger and Mary Catherine Stephan and Caitlin Klein, A1 agricultural to A2 agricultural residential.
The applicant's request to rezone from A1 agricultural to A2 agricultural residential, 1.16 acres, to be allowed to sell the home to the granddaughter and separate the home from the cropper land so she can apply for financing to remodel the home. The property is located 0.86 miles southeast of the city of Luxembourg along Clear Creek Road and is legally described as Lot 1 of Stephan's Farm, Second Subdivision, Section 23, T90 North, R2W, Liberty Township, Dubuque County, Iowa. The property is owned by Roger and Mary Stephan. Zoning in the area includes A1 agricultural to the north, the south, the east and the west. There are no special use permits attached to this property, there are no previous rezoning cases attached to this property. Four rezoning notification letters were sent to the property owners, and the city of Luxembourg was notified. Comprehensive plan, Chapter 9, Agriculture and Natural Resources, page 134, Objective 3.1 and Chapter 8 Housing, page 122, Objective 12.7 may apply to this case. So as you can see in this area around here is what they're trying to zone off. They're going to rezone this area with those buildings. They're separating it from these buildings.
Any questions for Tammy? Entertained a motion to open the public hearing?
Motion to open the public hearing.
And I will second that.
Okay, motion made and seconded to open the public hearing. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Carried three to zero. The public hearing is open in this matter. Case ZC number ten dash twenty-eight dash nineteen, Roger and Mary Catherine Stephan and Caitlin Klein, A-one agricultural to A-two agricultural residential. If you would like to speak on this matter, please approach the podium at this time, give your name and address for the record. The chair recognizes our former counterpart, Mr. Klein.
I'm different from this side of the.
You look pretty happy, pretty relaxed.
I think I might be able to handle this. My daughter wasn't able to attend this morning because she's in Thailand. That was a pretty long commute, so I figured I'd help her out this morning. Yeah, this all boils down to financing. They're buying the property from my in-laws on land contract, but they want to remodel, do in addition to the house. In order to do that with a conventional loan, they have to rezone and, or wrap the plat off the house. So that's basically all this about, I think there's a restriction, no additional house on the property, which is exactly what they want. Most, half of it's floodplain anyway, so, you know, it's not going to change anything in the neighborhood other than there's going to be a lot nicer house there in the future and some young kids living in the neighborhood. So, pretty straightforward A-two rezoning.
Thank you. Any questions for Darryl?
I note that it was a unanimous decision again by planning and zoning.
I just have one thing that's not related to this, but I, when Darryl came up, I just realized normally our meeting would have been yesterday on Veterans Day because of the holiday. We're having it today. And I know Darryl's a veteran. Do we have any other veterans in the room?
Sheriff Kennedy.
Sheriff Kennedy. Thank you for your service, and I wish I would have done that to start the meeting, but thank you.
Appreciate it.
Okay. Alright, anybody else on this, to speak on this matter? If you want to speak, please give your name and address for the record and approach the podium. Seeing none?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to close the public hearing. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Carried three to zero.
I'll make a motion to approve the zoning amendment.
And I will second that.
Motion made and seconded to approve the
Rezone.
Rezoning. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Carried three zero.
Make a motion to suspend the requirement that this amendment be considered and voted on for passage of two prior meetings.
I will second that.
Motion was made and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Make a motion that the amendment be adopted and that the zoning administrator be directed to enter the appropriate changes on the official zoning map and that the auditor be directed to arrange for the publication of the amendment and portion of the official zoning map as amended in the official county newspapers as required by law.
And I will second that.
Okay. Motion was made and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Carried three to zero. It is approved. Okay, next item on the agenda, item six, approval on plats. Six A, we have a resolution, final plat Haven Ridge, first edition, section twenty-seven, center township.
No, I think you should have Stephan's Farm. Haven Ridge first.
Do you want us to
No, no, right here.
Go out order?
No, no, not at all.
Okay.
My mistake. Okay, sorry about that. Okay, so the property is owned by Josta LLC and is located point six zero miles north of the city of Centralia at the corner of Humke Road and Sundown Road. The property is owned R two single-family residential with a total of eight point one seven five acres surveyed. The purpose of this plat is to create a residential subdivision. The survey creates five lots. Lot one through five are all a minimum of one acre in size and will be sold for residential homes. Each lot shall have its own individual septic system. Water shall be supplied by one shared well. There was a rezoning of this property on zoning case number twelve thirty-two of seventeen from R one row residential to R two single-family residential. Lot one through five have an approved residential entrance permit number nineteen dash thirty-one off of Humke Road. The survey creates a private road with a sixty-six foot wide right-of-way easement and with a twenty-foot road top and a fifty-foot radius cul-de-sac. There will be a twenty-two foot water and utility easement for lots two, three, and four, and a fifteen-foot water and utility easement for lot five and lot one. There were no additions or corrections required for this plat. The mortgage holder's acknowledgement is signed and attached, and all signatures are current. This plat has been reviewed by myself as plats officer and has all the required signatures. I respectfully recommend approval. So I'm going to, in light of I know, and I didn't know there was issues with this prior to today, but, so this is the property that's looking at being rezoned. Believe was in question earlier does not belong to this property, to these, these property owners. They are placing two ponds on this property for their runoff. They did work with Eric Schmeckel. Anthony's reviewed it as well, and they've met all the requirements that we would require for a subdivision. We have a project, quite a large project drainage report that was done, and this is pond one and the pond two, their storage requirements for those ponds on this property.
Do we know, Tammy, I'm, I'm sorry, Anne, you go ahead first.
I was just going to say, I know that there are issues that are happening in this area and in Asbury specifically about whether or not people are meeting the requirements that are in their subdivision plats for water drainage. I'm concerned about comments that were made to us in the beginning of our session, just in public comments. I'd like to see Eric here to assure me that, I don't know who owns the pond that sits there now, but if we have an issue that's growing, that's not going to get better. So I would prefer that you were aware of that, Tammy, and your office was addressing that. I, you know, that's where I am. I'd like to see it be something that we are addressing before we approve a plat that may have implication or not. I don't, I don't know, Anthony, if you wished you'd known that as well?
Issue with this overflow of this pond or redirection of the, of the water. So I do have some concerns about that as well.
And again, I apologize for not knowing that ahead of time as well.
Okay, that's okay.
Yeah, and, and again, Tammy, this, the agenda came out and it was, you know, I wasn't aware that it was, I had just talked to the Wagner's, so I contacted them and said it's on the agenda. So they're really, you know, it's not your fault.
Oh, no, no.
Not fault.
I believe you did have concern when the rezoning was going on, if I'm correct, if my memory serves me. Yeah, they, they had concerns about water drainage at that time when the rezoning was done.
I, I think as neighbors, I think they have the right to know whether this development is going to further impact the pond, the existing pond that's currently infringing on their property. I think that's a fair concern and, and question on their part. I can't give them that answer today. Again, I, we have Eric working on this, but I, I would prefer that he would be here as well for this discussion.
And again, Eric had reviewed everything and had signed off, you know, and told us that everything was okay. So unless something's changed in between there, I, I, you know, again, respectfully, I understand you wanted to come forward, but he did approve these plans.
Sure, and, and it's not about fault. It's that maybe there's new information coming to supervisors. That's the purpose of having public hearings, and that's the purpose of the public come at times. So, but if both the director of our department and our engineer are saying they wish they'd known, maybe it's, it's time to, to table and to look and see if it would change anything.
The, just a quick note, the stormwater control from this proposed subdivision, it appears it, it meets the specifications. It, it's controlling it appropriately, but it still has to release some, an amount of water over time. So is, that water will add to that, that pond, and if there is now a redirection of that water as to where it used to be, then that's, that's a discussion we need to look at, or have in.
Because the, the problems are existing today and no modifications have been changed to this parcel. Is that correct?
Correct.
So you could anticipate that if they do make modification changes to the existing parcel where there's problems to, you know, remove water from private land, for example, in the Wagner's, that may impact the subdivision.
I mean, I know it's a topic that's coming up more frequently because of the, you know, the amount of water that we're seeing, the water events. So it's something we probably shouldn't say, well, the boxes are checked, let's move forward. Is there harm in a, a short delay while we try to see what, and assess where this water's going?
And the property owners are here as well.
That'd be great if they would like to jump in. I wouldn't mind a hearing.
Sure.
I'd be, I have a couple of questions for Anthony first, if we can. Anthony, related to, do you know anything related to our culvert sizes and the flow of the water between Humke Road and Sundown Road? Not to put you on the spot, but if you, any of the other comments you can relate? Have we already had any problems that you were aware of?
No, I'm not, no.
So they're probably holding back the water adequately related to our infrastructure, but that's encroaching on private property?
You know, the, I think the majority of that property does shed to the pond as, as, as it sits now. They're going to have a couple of retention ponds that are going to help slow down that amount of water that releases from these, these, these new lots. But I am curious to hear about this kind of relocation of water taking place on these property owners if it's now.
I think this is the second year that they've had this type of flooding, about the same time this year as last year. And in my discussions with Eric Schmeckel, and again, I haven't had any direct conversation with Mr. Stackis, but that there's some problem with the drain being plugged is the representation from, that Eric has gotten. So I don't know what role the county plays in this, if any, but, you know, again, it, it, it's a fair question for the Wagner's wanting to know, is this development going to even further impact the flooding on their property?
And, for the Wagner's, you're contacting, was it Josta LLC or were you trying to contact these landowners? Those landowners, okay. So I just want to clarify, it wasn't Josta LLC that was not getting your letters or returning?
And I'm wondering if there's not a way to do this other than in this very public forum because you're all going to be neighbors together, right? So if there's not a way, because it's new information that you're presenting at least to the decision makers and the rec, people who make the recommendation to the county, if there's not a way to maybe table this for two weeks, to give some time for there to be conversation, I guess that's what I'd really like to have the owner talk about, is a short delay other than in this very public way.
My name is Luke Abbott. I live in Piast, one one two six Hansel Circle. Currently one of the owners of the eight acres that you see there. We've been in, working tight with Eric Schmeckel. We knew there was concerns across the pond, so to speak. We don't want to cause any issues. Of course, that is not our pond to take care of. What is to take care of is the water flow that leaves our property to the pond. So what we have done is we've done two large retention basins, basically covering the entire scope in front of the pond except for a small area. Instead of a small area right here, that's the only gap within the retention ponds. We were doing everything that we can to assure our neighbors that there wouldn't be any, you know, we wouldn't be causing any more issue. We simply started this wanting to build a home for our family. So we owned a one acre of land in Piasta. We had to go this route. Wasn't my preferred route to go, but this is what we did. So we want to have good relationships with our neighbors. And in doing this, we have been working well with the county board to make sure that we are doing everything that is required by the county. So I've talked to Eric, emailed Eric, talked to Anthony. I, I've done everything that we can possibly do and we've gotten all the approvals to do so. As far as what Stackis does on his property, that's his property to maintain that has nothing to do with Joyce to LLC.
So it's two separate owners?
Yes, definitely. So we don't own that pond. We're just going to control the water that we're supposed to control before it gets, so we, we are going to slow it down. Right now with no corn or anything there, it's just going to flow right into that pond and go away. We're putting two more ponds there to help stop that water or slow it down before it gets there. So.
Yeah, sure. Yeah, please go to the podium.
Like we had said earlier, I, the subdivision going in is a hundred percent an okay thing for us, and that's something we have known about, and that's an okay thing. But we also understand that neighbor's property impacts neighbor's property. And so although what, you know, he's requesting to put in is not going to have a direct impact, it's going to have an impact to the next neighboring property, which then impacts ours. And, and honestly, if the pond gets any higher, it's going to be impacting three properties because right now it's on the edge of our property. And so with any additional runoff, which it sounds like there's maybe going to be minimal, but even, and even just a little bit is going to increase that pond level as it currently is right now. So that is still a very big concern and that that property impacts another property which impacts another property. So I, I understand that it's not a direct, you know, adjacent property to us, but properties do impact one another.
And when I was out there, the, it's, any additional increase in water volume would bring it pretty close to your septic system.
Yep, that's right at the base of our septic at the moment.
And we've tried to, to resolve this issue with the, the neighbor in a very friendly manner, and that's not.
That's not this gentleman.
No, no.
But we've tried to resolve as neighborly.
This, this was an opportunity for the Wagner's to raise their issue because it is, it's, it's relevant, and, and it was an opportunity to express concern about the current situation.
And I'll just reiterate, I know you're going to slow the water down by those retention basins. That's the idea, but if you're not diverting it around the levee, then that water is ultimately going to end in that pond.
Okay, alright. And, and I don't want this to turn into a debate between neighbors. So do you have anything else from, from the Wagner's? Thank you. Okay.
Mr., I'm sorry, I do have a question for you. I'm sorry. Abbott, what is your, okay. And are you hoping to break ground?
We're hoping to get this moved along so we can actually start selling the property. This is, it's something we've been going on with since March.
Can we be back here in two weeks? Does that do you some harm?
It's not going to change anything on our end, I believe. It's, again, we've met all the requirements by the county.
And I, it's, again, we've met all the requirements by the county, so.
I guess I'm asking you to do a neighborly thing, maybe?
And if I said no?
No, I'm, I'm, that's why I'm asking. Right. Right, right. We just, we haven't yet addressed this as a county, that, that this is coming up about that other subdivisions are not necessarily following through on what they had agreed to do. And so you may be the first one to be impacted that I know about, you know, a projected plan. And, and that's what I'm asking, is are we ready, as a county, knowing what we now know in this room, are you comfortable still writing the recommendation? Or do we wish we had two weeks to get Eric Schmeckel here? I mean, we only meet every two weeks, so it's not like I'm trying to delay you. I just don't want to have this.
One of the questions I have, do we have a, I didn't see any of the detention ponds on the plat. Is that common? And/or do we have any drawings, uh, of the detention ponds?
Yeah, so. This plat situation, um. They were working, um, with IMG out of Illinois, and, uh, it, his father was working for that company and then ended up not working for that company anymore. So I have to say that Mr. Abbott's been trying to do everything he can, um, through IMG.
My question is, is there, just for today, is there any drawings of the detention ponds?
It is, it's in here.
Okay, they must be.
It's just a very small front sheet.
Okay.
That's what I was trying to get at, sorry.
Alright, and where are they? So I'm looking at them, I'm gonna have to zoom in. Forty foot drainage, storm sewer easement, is that it? I think I see it now.
So basically, the only gap, the, the retention pond's gonna run the entire length here. And the entire length, all the way through here. Small gap in lot two, right in the front, by about a hundred and, not even a hundred feet between the two ponds. Otherwise, it covers the full vast that surrounds the embankment of that pond, uh, that's on the adjacent property.
Is it, is it designated on that drawing? I don't, I'm not seeing, I'm not seeing the.
I'm trying to find the drawing where it would show it for you.
And, and if we, and if we don't have it, we can come, we can come back to it too. If we don't have it available right now, we'll come back and revisit it. I just didn't see the detention basins drawn at all on any of the plat.
There is a, there is a plan sheet with it.
Yeah.
Yeah, there is a line sheet, it's shaded, it's, we've.
I'm just trying to find it here for you.
I'm, I'm okay moving to table if you, if that's where the board is. Sounds like we've got some more work to do.
Well, I, I am too, but I mean, I'm not sure it's completely appropriate.
I will make a motion to table for two weeks.
Yeah, if you have an expert opinion, I'd love to hear it.
My motion stands.
There's a motion to table.
I'll second that.
Okay, open for discussion, go ahead.
I would be interested in hearing, uh, Dave Snyder's discussion.
Dave Schneider, Schneider Land Service, 906 First Street North. I was involved in this property back when it was split into three, and I wanna guess that was probably two or, two to four years ago. I don't know if any of you guys were on the, who was on the board at that point in time.
I don't remember it.
But, uh, we've had the, the same discussion at that point. The pond has been an issue, the, the pond is basically silted in because of the ag, obviously a little bit from this property, but probably more predominantly from some property to the west and southwest of here, as well as the subdivision to the south. In fact, there's still some major erosion coming out of the subdivision to the south, which I believe has no, uh, stormwater control on it. So this pond is actually acting as the stormwater control for the neighboring properties, for the sake of everything downstream at this point. Obviously, it's backing up into their yards, but their yards do not have capability of ponding on them as they're set right now for the most part. Yes, correct.
You're referring to the subdivision itself?
And you, and I didn't do the subdivision, but I did not see any obvious stormwater controls on that subdivision in that area. So this pond is actually acting as the stormwater control for that, substantially for that subdivision and all the developments that's happened there. And I guess I, the question I think that needs to be answered by the property owners, and, uh, this goes back to floodplain, are these proper, are these houses being impacted by the flooding? Or is it just their yard? If it's just their yard, in my mind, it's a lot less of an issue than if they're actually taking water onto their, into their basements and that sort of thing. So, you know, if the ponding is doing what it's supposed to, and backing up onto bare ground, obviously, if there's some septic systems that, that maybe need to be modified or moved or whatever, in my mind, this pond is doing what it's supposed to. There's some major runoff, uh, east of this pond that doesn't even get caught in this pond, coming out of the subdivision. And I crawled through those ditches, um, that, you know, there should be some ponding over in that area. And again, it's coming off, you know, there's some, some stash of water coming off that subdivision. So that's all I was gonna do, is just provide some history. This was hashed over at the time.
When the rezoning was going on.
When the rezoning is going on. So that's just kind of the, you know, my background on it. I think the subdivision should have taken the opportunity to try to purchase that pond back when this property was for sale, uh, as a control for their own, own development. So, anyway, that's my thoughts, but we'll let you guys take it from there, thank you.
And you can see I found, there's the Pond One and the Pond Two outlets. So there's, that's coming out of the, um, the project drainage report?
Thank you, I need, I need more time to, to soak that in.
Right, Mrs. Wagner, do you have another?
Yeah, I just wanted to add that our subdivision has been established for seventeen years. And in that amount of time, the pond has never come out of its bounds until one year ago, when the rezoning and everything, um, and it was parceled off. So, um, the pond has never been an issue for the drainage, it has always held everything we've had. It has risen when we have had rains, but never within six feet of our property. And because it is starting to encroach on our septic, that is concerned for us, because the, our subdivision was approved when it was built and put in, and the pond was there. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention, too, that this is the first time in seventeen years that the subdivision has been there, that the pond has been out of its bounds. So it's a new issue, it's a new, a thing, and I believe that it does hold the runoff, it's just, it's not being properly maintained.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, there's, the motion that made and seconded to table, is there any further discussion on this matter?
What I'd be looking to have is have Eric Schmeckel, uh, do a review, and whether we need a work session or not, I would be interested in, in, in his report related to the, the runoff. I'd like to have a, just a further understanding of the detention ponds and the design of those as well. That's just the part I, so that, that's the reason I'm tabling, just to gain some more information on those.
Right, and, and I think the pond has functioned, um, in, in the past. And again, I think there's a question of whether, um, this is, the, the level, has intentionally been raised, or if it's a plugged drainage system. And, uh, I think, um, uh, having input from Eric Schmeckel, I think is necessary for us to move forward, so.
Did you have?
I would like to hear what you have to say.
All I was gonna say is, you gotta remember, in the last two years, we've had larger than normal rainfall also. And to address your question about the water coming off, it happened last year. Nothing's changed on the property, even though that it's been rezoned, or whatever you want to say. It hasn't changed. So nothing that we've done has affected the pond. So, that's it, I'm, I appreciate your time.
In visiting with the Wagner's, the, in the past, it would, uh, when they got a big rain, when, let's face it, we had, what, three or four hundred year rain events in September? And, uh, uh, in the past, according to, uh, Mr. Wagner, the pond would go up, and then it would go back down. And, uh, that's probably the way it's supposed to work. But at some point, it stayed up, and there's actually a, there's a berm with trees and a, a fence, and the fence is barely visible. And I'm estimating it's at least three feet deep on their yard, in their yard, in their property, so.
I just want to say, Mr. Abbott, you, you really are due an answer today. You are, and you said, well, what if I say no, right? Yeah, you're due an answer today, your, your, things are all signed off, and you've done what you can. But I am likely to table this unless you've got some reason you need an answer today. Because there's other things happening here that I think you get a flavor for now as well. Right, but, and I don't expect that this is gonna be delayed. We should be able to get right back at this, so that he can start selling property to make good on his investment.
Right, okay, any other discussion, Tammy?
So the direction I'm hearing from you is you would like us to, to meet again with Eric Schmeckel, get some more information with Eric. Do you want us having a work session with you and Eric, then, is that what we're doing?
I would be interested in, in knowing more about the, uh, retention and detention ponds, and actually seeing a drawing of those, and, and having confirmation that they will actually hold back the water as, as planned and designed. And so that's, that's one of my holdups. I'm okay having that, uh, information shared, uh, in, in our supervisor's meeting, but I'm not against a work session either.
And I would just point out, our next, uh, meeting, which will be on the twenty-fifth, is an evening meeting, uh, so that we could have a work session directly before the meeting, for example. Not, so as not to inconvenience the folks involved, um, unduly, any more than they, they already have been. And, uh, make, you know, make sure that, uh, Eric Schmeckel and anybody else that we need, uh, is here for that, so.
Okay.
Okay? And any further comments? Alright, all in favor of the motion to table signify by saying aye. Aye. Carry three to zero. Alright, um, next up, six B, resolution, final plat, John Stephens Farm, third subdivision, section twenty-three, Liberty Township.
Alright, the property is owned by Jerome and Julie Rinnaker, and it is located point seven five miles southeast of the city of Luxembourg along Clear Creek Road, and with a total of one hundred and seventy-nine point seven three acres surveyed. The property is zoned A1 agricultural. The purpose of this plat is to separate the new hog building for the Suns LLC. The survey creates four lots. Lot one is a total of three point zero three acres surveyed, and is the site for the hog operation. Lot two is a total of fifty-four point seven three acres, and it will remain in current ownership and agricultural use. Lot three is a total of eighty-seven point zero two acres surveyed, and it will remain in current ownership and agricultural use. Lot four is a total of thirty-four point nine five acres surveyed, and it will remain in current ownership and agricultural use. Lot one will use an approved entrance number twenty nineteen twenty-four off of Clear Creek Road, and lot two will have access across lot one off of Clear Creek Road. Lot three and lot four will use existing, uh, field entrances off of Clear Creek Road. There were no additions or corrections required for this plat. The mortgages, the mortgage holders' acknowledgement is signed and attached, and all signatures are current. This plat has been reviewed by myself as plat's officer and has all the required signatures. I respectfully recommend approval. So this is a division of, of an existing farming operation, a hog operation. And so I'll show you, here is your lot one that's being created, which is going to be around the hog operation. And then your other lots, which are lot two, three, and four. And they'll all remain in ag. They've been divided up, so if, let's say, they can, when they continue buying into the farm, the family, that when they go to the bank, it's easier for them to buy a piece at a time.
Sure.
Versus coming in and trying to purchase the whole farm.
And is that the piece we just approved, A1 to A2 as well this morning?
No, that's not this one.
Okay.
This one did not have to be rezoned, because that small piece, this section here, one meets the ag guidelines.
The three acre parcel?
Yeah, even that, because they meet the farm exemption rule, because it's the hog operation. So they file a Schedule F, they do everything that meets our guidelines.
And so you can plat that off smaller?
You can plat that off smaller, because it meets that guideline.
Make a motion to approve.
I will second that.
Motion made and seconded to approve the resolution. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Aye, carry three to zero. Next up, six C, resolution, final plat, John Stephens Farm, fourth subdivision, section twenty-three, Liberty Township.
And this is the one that you'd heard earlier. The property is owned by Roger and Mary Stephens, and it's located point eight six miles southeast of the city of Luxembourg along Clear Creek Road, with a total of nine point two seven acres surveyed. The property is zoned A1 agricultural with a pending zoning case of ten twenty-eight nineteen, which we've just approved. One point one six acres to A2 agricultural residential. The purpose of this plat is to separate the home and the one point one six acres to sell to the granddaughter, so she can get the financing for the, to remodel the home. The remaining eight point eleven acres will be sold to the granddaughter for farming, and will be under a land contract with Roger and Mary. Lot one and lot two will both use existing residential accesses off of Clear Creek Road. There were no additions or corrections required for this plat. There are no liens or mortgages on this property, and all signatures are current. This plat has been reviewed by myself as plat's officer and has all the required signatures. I respectfully recommend approval. So this is just the plat following the rezoning.
A motion to approve.
I will second that.
Motion made and seconded to approve. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, carry three to zero. Okay. Let's take a brief recess, I'll sign these and.
Take a motion recess for five minutes.
Alright, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Agenda is, uh, action items, uh, which is agenda item number seven. The board may approve, deny, or table any action item. First item, uh, is, uh, seven A, resolution, uh, regarding appointment of deputies, assistants, and clerks. I guess we would go to our human resources director, Don Sherman.
I have reviewed both of these positions and recommend approval.
And they're both Sunny Crest Manor.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
Okay, uh, motion made and seconded to approve the resolution. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, carry three to zero. The next item is, uh, resolution approving the release of mortgage in Deboing County for Jumpstart Federal Housing Rehabilitation Payment Program.
A motion to approve the resolution.
And I will second that.
Motion made and seconded to approve the resolution. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Seven C is a resolution to approve necessary documents with FEH Design for professional services for specifications for front-end services for the Farley Shop, revised air exchange system and related mechanicals proposal.
Do we want to table this, or destroy it?
Motion to table.
There's a motion to table?
Either way.
Is there a second?
If it tables, we're gonna just keep, we're gonna just keep coming, coming back to it, it's gonna be on our agenda.
Yeah, I would just take it off, just take it off.
Withdraw my motion.
Okay.
That's my thought, is that, you know, we just, at this point, it doesn't sound like that's a hard direction we're going, and we may come back to it in a few months.
So how do we withdraw something from the agenda? Oh, it is a resolution.
I'll make a motion to deny the resolution.
Okay.
And I will second that.
Motion made and seconded to deny the resolution. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, carry three to zero. Alright, seven D is a resolution approving the Tom Hancock Memorial Grant Awards. It is in your.
Have Tom back?
He's.
Talk a little bit?
Hello, good morning supervisors, I just wanna reiterate, uh, there's, uh, we did receive nine applications, and we, and we were able to fund eight, and I think it was a good, um, representation. There's a lot of equipment down there that's life-saving equipment. I think you're gonna make, uh, eight, eight services, and, uh, real happy. And I think, uh, this is gonna go a long way to make the citizens of Beaufort County safer. It's gonna make a better prepared, uh, emergency response agencies. And this grant program is, uh, very well received, well needed. Fire and EMS people, you know, are having fundraisers. Fire and EMS people, you know, or having fundraisers all the time to, to do equipment like this. And, um, we're really proud that we're able to, um, do the new Vienna-Luxembourg fire station project to give them a good portion of the, the money. So I think Chief Lukin is happy with that as well. So, again, thank you very much and I think people are excited for next year. I did have some conversations with Stella about how to work it through, if you guys approve through my office as far as, you know, being able to, um, document everything and, and make sure the committee gets the, the feedback and we get everything that it's, um, done appropriately.
And I did also, when I was meeting with, um, with Tom about a bunch of other things, we should look at perhaps moving this into his department and moving it away from a grant program into a line item so that he does have authority to kind of look at this as a, a standing, I think that was our intent, that it would be a standing grant and that it might move into emergency management. And, um, we should at least look at that. And you can visit with Stella about that as well, but, um, it's certainly not something that we want to, I think we intend to fund at an ongoing basis while our fire and EMS have need. So, just a comment, I know we're not doing anything about it today.
I, I guess, and I'm not, um, uh, I'm not disagreeing with that, but I, I do think, um, the committee, uh, really did prioritize. I was, um, you know...
It would remain a committee. It's just that, it would remain a committee.
Yeah.
And that report would be to us and we would approve the awards. But just moving it as we come upon these, it should find a home and be connected to a department if it can be. This, I think, is one of those examples where it, it's gonna be facilitated by our emergency management department.
Well, I'd like to say thank you. Thank you for, for organizing this, taking an idea and, and moving it forward. Uh, you've got, uh, you know, 21 are in that neighborhood as far as EMS and fire throughout Dubuque County and to help coordinate them, uh, get the applications in, uh, vet them, and then come up with the awards, uh, in, in such a short time. I appreciate you and Supervisor Baker and everyone else's involvement in this. So I'm sure Tom Hancock would be very proud.
Yep, I think, I think he would and Clean is very happy. And, you know, it takes a lot of, a lot of pancakes to even come up with $5,000, so.
Exactly.
And, and paddle wheels, right?
Yeah, a lot of spends on the paddle. Paddle wheel is more fun though, Jake.
And it moves it away from fundraising for yourself. I know when we attend a pancake breakfast.
And, and obviously, these are things that in spite of all the fundraising that the departments do, um, some key, uh, safety, um, uh, equipment and, and were, um, they weren't able to fund and, and...
Yeah, like, like the Worthington project, for example, is a, a key piece of equipment. If somebody can have a heart attack anywhere. And they were able to get a, a Monsanto grant, I believe, for 2,500. You know, because their total project was about 18,000 and they were able to get a DRA grant for 5,000. So this just finished the project for them. Otherwise, they'd have had a very tough time coming up with the money to complete the project in the timeframe in order to even draw down the DRA money. So it's just that collaboration is just excellent and exciting, so.
And I was really impressed with the committee members being able to set aside, you know, which department they were from and recognize the, the needs that were, uh, laid out in the, uh, grant applications. And I don't think we'll have any problem, um, worrying about whether or not there's gonna be enough grant applications, uh, for, for this funding. And, uh, I think also they've probably set the bar for what the maximum, uh, grant will be. I think that was part of the discussion as well, so.
But leaving it open too, there is some, you know, if somebody had a catastrophic failure of a, a fire engine or something and needed, you know, that, so we're still open to...
Right.
And this, uh, it's probably a good time to, to recognize while this is equipment and training, the real asset is the volunteers. The people that, uh, basically devote their time to the community to provide EMS and fire to, to make the community safer, all on a volunteer basis. And, uh, without that asset, uh, I don't know where we'd be. Uh, it would cost millions and, uh, we would be a less safe community.
Yeah, and it gives them the tools to do their job, so. Complete some very worthy projects. Thank you.
Thanks.
I will make a motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded to approve the resolution. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, carried three to zero. All right, next up is seven E, resolution approving the office lease with the Dubuque Idea Campus LLC for the CEO of the East Cent... That should be Central, I think, right? East Central Mental Health Region.
And so the concept of this is to pair them with the existing, um, is it social workers, Anne, that are coming from Cedar Rapids? Don't we already rent one office at the space?
No, but the concept wasn't to pair. The concept was to find...
So there's no coordination between those two groups? I guess I assumed there was, but... Maybe they do different roles.
Well, they do different things and it wasn't because of that. Otherwise, I mean, I think we just found a pretty inexpensive place to be where it seemed like there was good creative energy. The response that, um, the CEO has had with me is that it's, she's excited to be in a space where there are people looking, they're just working on problems differently. That's a good energy.
So it's just coincidence then, okay.
Right.
I think it's interesting to note that it only goes until the end of our fiscal year. So it's a month to month, it's a, a short-term lease, basically. That's noteworthy.
Were there any other options discussed?
I, I don't, I wasn't in this.
Oh, who proposed this resolution? Okay, I was, thought it came from the mental health region.
No, it's not mine. I, I'm assuming it's coming from Dawn.
Heard her voice.
We're in discussion, Dawn, on the, uh, seven E, the office lease, uh, resolution for the, at the Dubuque Idea Campus LLC for the CEO of the East Central Mental Health Region.
Um, so this, we had been looking for some space. Um, she's a very remote worker. Um, this is the space that we put the regions to social, um, workers in. So she shares a similar space. I think she's, um, an office down from there. Um, and so the, the region will reimburse us 100% of the cost, um, any of the costs incurred. So this lease is $600 a month. We've only done the lease till the end of the fiscal year because we haven't budgeted beyond that. So we can relook at it, um, reevaluate it at that time. But we will be, the county will be reimbursed 100% of the expenses. And she will be here next Monday for a short work section, session introduction as well.
Right. And, and so my, my two questions, uh, one was because we already had a lease with some of the social workers, this was a, a addition or pairing. And then secondly, do we look at any other alternatives? So maybe the first question first.
Yes, we looked at several alternatives. She was, she was in the building for a little while. Um, it was a shared workspace with two confidential employees. And so we weren't really able to give her a confidential area. Um, we've actually walked over to the old jail area, um, looked over there. And then we had three different office spaces from a realtor that they had forwarded us, um, some links to there. And this one, we actually did a, a walkthrough and she was very happy with the facilities.
Yeah, I've, I've been there, I know it's, it's a new facility and, uh, well done.
Anything else on, uh, under discussion? We have a seven E resolution.
First part, Dawn, the first part of my question was you mentioned the, the two other social workers. So they're adjacent to this office or in the same, same floor?
Yes, they're on the same floor. I believe they're just one office over.
Okay. And are you familiar with their duties? Would there be any synergy or discussion between them or are they totally separate?
No, she's met with them, um, with the social workers in that building as well, so. No, I would, in, in the whole environment is to kind of have that openness. They're there, I think, three to four days a week. The social workers are present in that building as well. So I would anticipate that they would be meeting, um, you know, trading ideas, that it would be a good, you know, region, um, workplace for them, for the region.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. What's your pleasure on the resolution?
I will make a motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the resolution in seven E. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, carried three, zero. Seven F, resolution to approve the Iowa Department of Transportation Materials Inspection Cost Voucher, FM Transfer for HMA Resurfacing with Cold-in-Place Recycling Project on Old Davenport Road and Feeny Road. Project STP dash S dash CO3183 dash 5E dash 31. Anthony, you want to interpret that?
Sure, yeah. The, uh, as you can see, the DOT is a little behind on their billing. Um, this is for Old Davenport Road, which was a couple of years ago. It, that was a federal aid project and, um, they are required to come in and do a certain amount of testing on the materials on, on those federal aid projects. So this encompasses that testing, uh, of the asphalt. It's generally just the asphalt was, is what they tested. And, uh, they subsequently, uh, bill us for that testing. So we have to pay for that. It comes out of our foreigner market account. It's not a local, a local expenditure. It comes straight out of our FM account. That's what it is.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the resolution in seven F. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, carried three, zero. Seven G, resolution to approve the Iowa Department of Transportation Materials Inspection Cost Voucher, FM Transfer for the HMA Resurfacing on Clay Hill Road. Project STP dash S, CO3184 dash 5E 31. Anthony, same thing?
Same thing for Clay Hill Road. It was a, a federal aid project as well. It's just, uh, testing and monitoring of the, uh, asphalt materials on this project.
Wish to approve.
And I will second.
There's a motion made and seconded to approve the resolution in seven G. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, carried three to zero. Seven H, resolution to approve snow and ice removal. 28E agreement with the city of Balltown for the 2019, 2020 winter. The amount of that is $880.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the resolution. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Carried three to zero. Seven I, resolution approving the memorandum of understanding with the Iowa Homeland Security and Emergency Management Department for funds for a hydrology study. This is the, uh, endeavor we've been working on with Homeland Security. Houston Engineering, Eric Schmeckel, Homeland Security. And this is a $30,000, uh, um, grant, basically, your contribution.
Dawn, was this sent to the county attorney?
No, this came directly from Homeland Security. What, we need to have this signed off and then on your next agenda, you'll have the contract from Houston Engineering for the actual project services.
And will you be sending that to the county attorney?
The Houston Engineering. Yes, I can do that.
So wouldn't we want this to also be looked at by the county attorney?
This is, isn't this receiving, to receive the funds?
This is to receive the funds, yes.
Did you have questions on it? I think it was in the packet.
Right. The question is, when do we send things to the county attorney?
And I think that's a, it's a good question, probably one that we should work on related to process.
I didn't say I'm holding it up. I'm just asking if it gets sent, if it doesn't get sent, who decides that? You know, these are the questions that I have all the time. I know that's maybe in our strategic planning discussions.
That was my response. We should work on that as a process, so that would be agreeing with what you're saying.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the resolution, uh, approving the memorandum of understanding with the Iowa Homeland Security and Emergency Management Department.
Yes, I, I have some discussion about that. Which is, when this comes in, I mean, I don't see, I don't see the agenda packet until sometime Thursday. And then no one's in on Friday, perhaps. So could we have, uh, uh, Dawn, could you have a system for sending things to the county attorney? That are, I mean, you must know, this must come to you some other time before Thursday. Okay. So how, how, I mean, I would like to maybe see things on Tuesday too, but again, I mean, I don't know. But, so what, what is your thought process on how something goes to the county attorney or doesn't?
Well, I think this needs to have the county attorney present, um, because I, I don't disagree with you that I think his eyes and approval of it, um, that would, you know, it's, it's his commitment to following our timeline because I would then, he would, I got that at 3:30 on Tuesday. Would he be able to review it, ask questions, um, and get back to us by noon on Wednesday? So I would, I think he needs to be present for that so that we can work together on timelines. Um, otherwise, if, this would just have been on the next agenda because it wouldn't have been able to meet the deadline. So I want to be respective of his time as well.
I mean, I think that the key thing is this is, uh, $30,000 that's coming into Dubuque County from the federal government. And, uh, that is a very good thing for a specific initiative related to water quality and quantity, which we have plenty of.
Right. Okay, any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, carried three, zero. All right. Next item, uh, is item eight, communications. This correspondence that the board will receive and file without taking action. Uh, we have, uh, item eight A, a letter received from, uh, county auditor regarding reappointment of representative to the county compensation board. Uh, county attorney, or county auditor's representative, uh, uh, reappointing, uh, Mr. Joe Link. So, like, motion to receive and file would be in order unless we want to do them en masse.
So it's a, we're just received and file this minute? Yeah, I'll make a motion to receive and file the document.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. I'm just gonna ask, uh, Dawn, if we could, uh, at the next meeting, put something on to revisit our representatives. We have, uh, Dan White and Doreen Wiederhold. And I know Doreen has had a, a change in employment and shift and may or may not be available. I'll check with her and maybe the other supervisors could, you know, think if there's a, someone that they'd like to have.
Do we each have a person?
No, we have two.
We, the, the board of supervisors has two.
That's correct.
And then how are those people chosen?
We, you ask for volunteers.
Okay.
So.
So is there time to ask for a volunteer?
Right. That's what I'm, that's why I brought it up. We can't do anything with it here, but I thought it would be okay, as long as we're in session, to point out that, uh, we may need, uh, someone else. I'll, I'll double check with her, but, uh...
So we would each bring the name of a volunteer and choose two or what, what do we do?
I would say, I think we, and the last time, uh, I think there was a change, maybe two or three years ago, and we appointed two different people.
Yeah, Dan White and Doreen Wiederhold.
And I think that was at the, probably the initiative of Supervisor Baker and myself as new people coming on. But I, I think it's just, uh, an open process where they'll, they normally meet around budget time in February.
In December.
Actually, in December, okay. So in December, so, yeah, very timely now then.
Okay. So you think there's gonna be an opening for some?
I believe there is, I'll double check, but I can't, with her, yeah. Without going into her...
If there is gonna be an opening, could you let Dawn know and maybe you could let me know?
And if she's not able to serve, should, we get a letter or an email or something? Okay.
Well, just for conversation, the board can direct new people at any time. So there's, on all the, you know, there's not, we don't have to wait for an opening. So if there's a person you feel that's qualified and you'd like to serve, then, uh, feel free to serve that name up.
Right. Okay. All right. We have, uh, next item is eight B, a letter from the... We have, next item is eight B, a letter from the Dubuque County Board of Health regarding syringe services programs.
I would like to make a comment about this. I attend the meetings of the subcommittee, and I know Supervisor Chair Baker, you attend that frequently as well. There's been significant work put forward by the subcommittee in addressing the syringe service report from Mercy One, and then also in crafting this letter to kind of give us some closure to it, to say, it doesn't, we don't want to just have shelved it, you know, here's kind of the recommendations that they have to follow up on that. I, I think it's, it's, we should be thankful that they did this, that they tried to put their own committee, and then, of course, it comes back through the Board of Health. The Board of Health, I think, has done an exceptional job of being on task and looking at things that come up. So it's appreciated certainly by me, and I would assume by you as well, that they did put this together for us as some recommendations. I mean, I don't know that they're necessarily firm recommendations, certainly it's just kind of general language about trying to follow up on that report.
Any other discussion? Otherwise, we need a motion to receive and file.
I will make a motion to receive and file the document.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded to receive and file, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, carried three, zero. Eight C, incident report, recommendation to file and refer to the Budget Director, Stellerundy. It looks like it was a minor accident, so I hope that's what it was. Is there anything we need to know with this? Is this something that's getting turned over to insurance?
Anthony, were you familiar with this, and any comment?
No, yeah, he, he came in and filled out the incident report, you know, there was the fact of the incident there. Yes, we'll just turn it over to insurance and let them deal with it.
Thank you. I'll make a motion to receive and file and turn this over to insurance.
Second.
Okay. All in favor of receiving and filing signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, carried three, zero. Okay, eight D, manure management plan, annual update, Dell Ralvis, number five nine three nine three.
Make a motion to receive and file.
And I will second that.
Motion made and seconded to receive and file, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, carried three, zero. Okay, eight E, under communications, proof of publication, this is the hatch maps for the, for Duschner and Rinnecker.
That's where we receive and file these? I'll make a motion to receive and file the proof of publication.
Second.
Okay. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, carried three, zero. Okay, item nine is under appointments. We've got, from the Board of Health, we have an application. Let me enlarge a little bit here. We have Matthew Sanford from, has applied for the County Board of Health, and this is, yeah. And we are, we do have an opening on this committee.
I've received, I think, a letter or a communication from the president of our Board of Health asking us to appoint no one further, that they are looking at the size of the Board of Health. I don't know where that is, Dawn, does that strike memory with you?
Yes, it does, he's asked that we, they're, they have not made a recommendation, they're going to, in their December meeting, the Board of Health is going to make a recommendation to bring to the Board of Supervisors to change their bylaws. That has not been done right now. There is a vacancy, the vacancy to receive gender balance needs to be a male, so that's why you see this in front of you at this point. You can table it if you would like to wait until the Board of Health's recommendations on their bylaws, but it is a male needed for gender balance, and we received an application from a male at this time.
Kind of getting mixed message here, because it was not that long ago that they asked us to expand the board, which we did. And I'm, we have somebody that wants to serve, my inclination is to allow them, is to appoint the individual based on, you know, based on their previous action, which Mr. Beschen was also involved in, and so...
I think they're having trouble getting a quorum, and that was, that's my understanding, I mean, difficulty getting a quorum, and so they felt if the board was smaller, they know who, they felt they could make a quorum more easily, I, you know.
Yeah.
Imagine being Mr. Sanford, and then realizing that you've applied, and then they wish to have a smaller board.
Yeah, I, yeah, it's a mixed message to me, I, I think if we have people that are willing to serve, I, I think the more the barrier. I, I know that Mr. Beschen's seat is up as well, I think I received communication to that effect, but I think that's up at the end of the year, if I'm not mistaken. So I'm not sure if he's talking about his spot or the more recent opening. But I don't think we can jump back and forth.
Motion to table and ask Dawn please to look into that letter from Mr. Beschen, I don't know where that is.
Well, they'll be bringing their formal bylaws, it will, actually, it will have to be in January, right, your next board meeting, they're, it is an item for discussion on the next Board of Health meeting on December 12th or 11th.
But did we get an email from him asking us to hold off?
Yes.
Okay, to each of us individually, I don't know, I don't know how that communication came to me.
He sent an email, yeah.
I would be looking to, at least from what I see, I do not know Mr. Sanford, but his qualifications seem very good, and he's willing to volunteer for the Board of Health, so I would be looking to move forward, but I understand there is a motion on the table.
Okay, there's a motion to table. Motion dies for lack of a second. I'll make a motion to move forward with the appointment of Mr. Sanford.
And I will second that.
Is there any discussion?
I will be voting no, because I think that the chair of our Board of Health has asked us to wait on this, and they are in the process of looking at their bylaws. I don't want to have other folks from that Board of Health leave us, they are doing great work, they are. And I do know Mr. Sanford, he's on the ad hoc committee, or excuse me, he's on the subcommittee that deals with the syringe service program. That I, he's at a monthly meeting.
Do you feel he'd be a good addition to the Board of Health?
If the Board of Health wanted more folks, I think we also have, and we have another application from a woman that we were waiting on, holding on that one to see, I mean, she's, and works at Crescent Health with the Marshall East population. I mean, we have, there's interest from folks in the community, but we kind of have to have some conversation with our, our Board of Health.
And we had, and so that's probably what Supervisor Baker's alluding to, is we went through this maybe a year ago. So we had those conversations, and the Board of Health was, you know, very aggressively saying that they wanted to expand their board. And so I'm honoring their request by adding Matthew Sanford.
Did you not get the, Mr. Beschen's email, do you, did you not get that message?
I did receive that communication.
So that's all, I'm just trying to, you know, we got that message.
Yep.
And so that's why I'll be voting no on this recommendation.
All right. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Carried two to one. All right, the rest of the, under nine B, is open vacancies on boards and commissions, informational only. Okay, and then we'll go to personnel requisitions, item 10 on the agenda. We have 10A, permanent full-time victim, witness coordinator, county attorney's office. Dawn, do we have anything on?
This is just a resignation, so it's not adding any FTEs to the composition, it's just replacing now currently vacant position.
I'll make a motion to approve the personnel requisition.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the personnel requisition, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, carried three to zero. Next up is 10B, permanent full-time clerk for sheriff's office. Sheriff Kennedy, anything you want to add? Perhaps Dawn as well?
This was the position that we, we had the work session about two weeks ago. We, we took your recommendation, I spoke with Dawn about it. Her position on it originally, I know we had talked about either starting the person's pay on the first of July or the first of January. When I spoke with Dawn, she felt that if this person was doing the job and they were not getting paid, that they should be getting started, or we should start paying them immediately. So it was her, with her direction, that we went ahead and put the personnel requisition in, and will be, if it's approved, we'll be bumping her pay up at the beginning of the next pay cycle.
And so this is an upgrade from a clerk three to a clerk four?
Correct.
For a clerk three that was performing at a clerk four level?
Correct.
Yeah, and we had discussions even during negotiations, so this, there has been lots of, the sheriff was trying to relieve this person of some of the duties, the higher responsible duties, and just given his operations, he was not able to do that. And so, it's my recommendation, since the employee is currently doing and has been doing that, that we place this person at the, the correct classification immediately.
Motion to approve.
And I will second that.
Okay. Motion made and seconded to approve, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, carried three, zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, 10C, permanent full-time deputy jail for the sheriff's office. And Dawn, do you have anything on this?
This is just replacing vacant employees, so again, it's no increase in employee count.
I will make a motion to approve the personnel requisition.
Motion made and seconded, just in discussion, was this a retirement replacement or? Okay, all right, all in favor of the motion to approve signify by saying aye.
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 Carried. Three to zero, all right, next up is 10D, permanent full-time maintenance worker two for the road department. And Dawn, do you have anything, or Anthony?
Yeah, this, we're still in the merry-go-round of internal postings, so Brent Grover bid into Jim Larkin's position, now it's Brent Grover's M2 position that's being advertised internally.
Okay, so we had a retirement?
Yes, Jim Larkin's going to retire in December.
Okay. All right.
I'll make a motion to approve the personnel requisition.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded to approve the personnel requisition, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, carried three, zero. All right, move to agenda item number 11, which is tabled and pending items. We have 11A is strategic planning. We did have our first meeting, and are we? Do we have another meeting scheduled?
Yeah, I think we did.
December 11th at 2:00 PM out at ECIA.
Okay. All right. And next item then, if there's nothing else on the strategic planning, 11B, jail assessment project. Is there any update? I think that's...
I thought they got back the architectural report. I thought that they got back some information from the architect, I was expecting to see something, so I think there is something coming.
Okay, so we'll keep that on there, under tabled and pending. All right, item 12, public comments. At this time, anyone may address the board on matters which are of concern to that person and which are not agenda items. Please go to the podium, state your name and home address. Please be aware the board is limited in their ability to respond to such inquiries, and I will prohibit the board from deliberating or acting on items not appearing on the agenda. Is there anyone here to speak in public session, public comments, excuse me? Seeing none. I would entertain a motion to recess.
I'll make a motion to recess.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, recess till 11:00 AM.